I need a rearview mirror.
He liked the nuns used to have when we were kids, never could figure out how they knew what we were doing.
Janelle, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Cookedup?
Here.
Ms. Dara?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Westbrooks is absent.
All right, this is a public hearing for a proposed final site plan for a new self-storage building for the space place of Mastonia. Is there anyone here to address that? Hearing no reply. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Let me call the planning commission meeting to order. I'm showing that it's 5:30. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Cookedup?
Here.
Ms. Dara?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Westbrooks is absent.
Mr. Westbrooks will be here a little bit later, but we have a forum right now anyway, so we should be fine. Let me get to my sheet on the agenda.
Oh, boy.
We have minutes, but is there anybody that would have to abstain on any of those minutes, or can we pass them?
I believe...
Rita was absent for the April 21st.
Is it April 21st?
Yes.
I could abstain from the April 21st approval of the minutes.
All right, so we don't have a forum, so let's, we'll do those move on to another time in the agenda, please.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna start right off with the proposed final site plan for the new storage space place building. Do we have anyone here? Yes, sir, come on down. How you doing?
I'm doing good, Mayor.
Good to see ya. All right, do you have all this information, Janelle?
Um, yes.
Okay.
While I have a...
Are you Michael?
Michael.
No, I am op-saf in representing Mike Wolf.
All right, do you have a card?
No.
Okay. How do you spell your last name?
S is in Sam, A F is in Frank, F is in Frank, I A is in Nancy.
Very good. All right, we have planners comments, Janelle?
Yes. The applicant is proposing to construct a new forty by two-hundred-twenty-foot, eight-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot self-storage building on property located at eighty-nine forty-five South Freeway Drive. The subject site is located in General Industrial District. I reviewed an application, including a final site plan dated May 30th, 2014, and offered the planning commission with the following information to consider. Section 1169-04B1 permits storage and warehousing through the provisions set forth from Section 1169-3B3. However, Section 1171-18 supplementary regulations requires a conditional zoning certificate pursuant to Section 1137-04 of the code, specifically for self-service mini-storage facilities. Applications for conditional zoning certificates do require a public hearing, and said hearing must be noted in the newspaper of general circulation in the city at least ten days prior to the date of the hearing. Section 1171-18C requires any self-service mini-storage facility to be setback one thousand feet from any residential dwelling. If the planning commission finds that there is not an adverse impact to the residential dwellings unless our setback may be established, but not less than five hundred feet. From my review of Summit County aerial photograph, it appears that the proposed structure will be setback approximately four-hundred-and-fifty feet from the residential dwelling at the end of Starlight Road to the east. This setback distance should be confirmed by the applicant. If it is less than five hundred feet, permissible through a planning commission action, then a variance from the Florida zoning appeals is needed. Please note, the existing self-storage unit to the east of the proposed building location is setback approximately three-hundred-and-sixty feet from the same residential dwelling unit off of Starlight Road. If the commission releases permits for setback reduction, then landscaping along eastern property line should be installed. The proposal satisfies the performance criteria outlined in Section 1169 with the exception of Section 1169-04H. This section provides the planning commission with authority to require screening, landscaping, or otherwise, so that the proposed storage facility is not seen from any residentially-zoned land. To the east of the subject site, east of the adjacent railroad tracks, is a residentially-zoned subdivision. The planning commission should consider requiring landscaping be installed along the rear property line to provide screening for the residential development to the east. While the code requires a conditional zoning certificate for use, I don't readily see why such requests can't be approved provided landscaping is installed along each property line to buffer the homes along Starlight Road. However, regardless of landscaping, if the applicant can't provide the needed minimum five-hundred-foot setback with planning commission approval, then a variance from the BZA is needed. Given the fact that a variance may be needed and a conditional zoning certificate is required, I believe the proposal should be tabled until the code requirements are satisfied.
All right, there's also some comments by Nick on this, isn't there?
Yes.
Janelle, we're gonna give you a workup, kiddo. Could you read that, please?
Yeah. Engineering does not have any issues, but the final site plan, full engineering submittal will need to be provided prior to issuance of engineering approval, including a full SWPP plan and storm sewer calculators. We are in agreement that the proposed impacts of the site will not warrant storm water management or water quality treatment.
All right, Dennis?
No comments.
No comments? Okay, so are there any questions or comments from the commissioner? I think there's not any problems with this. I don't know if it's five hundred feet back, is it?
Well, it's not. However, it's actually being located behind the existing building. Here is the existing building. And the new building is being located here. Give you one second.
Or the existing building, or...
Right, your...
Okay, sorry.
Here is the location. Here is the existing building, in the same relative position. And here is the proposed new building.
Right.
So it's farther away than the existing building. And there wasn't, well, there was a...
Can I? That's what I was looking for. It's just yours is out. I can't see that. I was trying to see what the measurements were. I think it takes a...
It's approximately four-hundred-and-fifty feet from the corner of the residence.
Oh, God, you're within fifty feet.
Yeah.
Is there any buffering here?
Yes, there is. That's what you're looking at from the storage facility, and that's what you're looking at from, I believe, the homes.
Right.
So you can't see anything there.
I don't, yeah.
The only thing is chili on the road.
All right, but by code, do we have to have that?
They've already applied to the BZA.
Yeah, they already have.
The application has been sent.
So we can give a tentative approval if they pass BCA?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve after, uh, permit it to BZA.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
All right, it passes, and you're on your way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for commenting.
Mayor, we also have to do a motion for the conditional use permit.
Oh, you conditional use permit, that's what I'm saying.
For the, that we have the public hearing for.
Oh, yes. All right, do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion for a conditional use permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry I was late.
One time ago, because I was involved doing all the schools.
Sorry I was late.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, see you later. Okay. Next, we have on the agenda the proposed conditional site plan approval for Highland Point Parkway Ambassador Football Complex. Come on down, fellas, and bring up another chair if you need or whatever you need.
I think the owner just wants to make a few remarks and then... I'm Bill Doty, I'm from Doty and More Architects, the design architectural director for the complex.
Hi. We met before.
Yes, we have Chris Confor.
All right. Uh, hi.
Hi there.
We have, here's your sucker.
Yeah, this is John Rora.
Yeah.
Hi Rita.
Rita.
Chris Confor.
I don't know what I did.
It's good to see you.
Hi. I think we've spoke, have we spoke before on the phone?
Possibly.
Yeah, somebody's spoken a couple times.
All right, why don't you have a seat and let us start off with the planning, uh, planners comments first, and then we'll go on into your presentation. So, Janelle, could you read those, please? You got a lot of... Are you okay? Do you need a drink of water or anything?
I'm good right now.
Okay.
The applicant is proposing to construct a football complex developed in two phases off of Highland Point Parkway. The first phase of the project includes an approximate twenty thousand, previously shown as thirty-seven thousand square feet, square foot building, with seventy-eight off-street parking spaces in the size of the building, and the second phase is unknown. The site plan does not scale properly. The subject site is located in Limited Industrial District. I reviewed an application, including a site plan dated May 30th, 2014, and offered the planning commission with the following comments for consideration. Section 1169-03B7 permits indoor and outdoor private recreation facilities. However, this section of the code also contains language that states all activities related to permitted uses in the LI district must be contained wholly within an enclosed building. It is my understanding that the proposal is to construct an indoor soccer arena, and all uses other than parking will be contained indoors. This should be confirmed by the applicant to determine if any approval from the BZA is needed. The meeting agenda states that the applicant is seeking conditional site plan approval. Since this is a permitted use pursuant to Section 1169-03B7 of the code, I do not believe conditional zoning approval is required. Section 1169-03F2B requires a hundred-and-fifty-foot side yard setback with abutting residential properties. In this case, a very small portion of the Phase Two building does not comply with the a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback requirement. The building should be shifted to accommodate the setback, or the applicant will need to obtain a variance from the BZA prior to Phase Two being constructed. Section 1169-03G sets a minimum or a maximum building height of thirty-five feet, and according to the conceptual site plan, a seventy-foot building height is being proposed. A variance from the BZA will be needed to construct the building to the proposed height. A site plan according to Section 1137-05 of the code is required for approval. Section 1137-05F does provide the planning commission a venue to meet informally to review preliminary plans prior to preparation of final plans. In my opinion, this submittal should be considered as an informal review of the proposal to assist the applicant with conceptual layout of the site plan prior to the final plan submittal. Extensive screening and buffering should be considered along the rear yard of the houses abutting the west side of the property. These houses are accessed from South Bedford Road and are zoned R1 Residential District. Architectural building elevations and related building materials must be submitted to the planning commission for review pursuant to Section 1137-05 of the code. A review from the city architect of the building architecture should be conducted. One ingress egress is provided to the facility simply because there doesn't appear to be another possible way to access the building, the site. This is concerning because the volume of traffic anticipated from the project is likely intense. I suggest a traffic impact analysis be conducted to determine what, if any, traffic mitigation measures are needed to accommodate the volume of traffic generated from this project. The proposed use is permitted, and the project presents an excellent economic development opportunity for the city. However, the site plan still remains conceptual in nature and will need to be developed further with planning commission input. At a minimum, variances are likely to construct the project as proposed. The applicant should consider eliminating as many variants as possible through creative design and then seek all necessary variance approvals from the BZA. While the use is permitted, strong attention should be given to screening and buffering the adjacent residential properties.
All right, now we add some comments from Nick.
A separate planning commission submittal will be required for the Phase Two site plan. And engineering recommends the storm water management basin shall be designed to account for total site improvements for Phase One and Phase Two at this time. The applicant will need variances for the building height and side yard setback for Phase Two building. A full engineering submittal will need to be provided prior to issuance of engineering approval. Submittal shall comply with 1137-05 for site plans and 923 for erosion and sediment control and post-construction storm water quality. A long-term maintenance agreement and permanent easement will be required for the proposed storm water management facility. Storm water design shall be in accordance with the latest edition of the Summit County Engineers' Storm Water Management Manual. The designer will need to coordinate with the electric company throughout the design process due to the proximity of the building and parking areas to the electric easement. The power lines within the easement are high voltage transmission lines.
Dennis?
The only comment I had was it'd be nice to see some elevations, but the board's there, I assume you have a rendering, so it's a moot point. I have some...
All right. We have a fifty-fifty chance of this being taped, because sometimes the tapes don't work. All right. What, right now, the machine is on, so maybe if you could come to this microphone over here and then kinda show us, maybe you could turn around, Kevin, and make your presentation from that mic right there? And you're the guy that has come up with all the innovative ideas, right? You heard that part?
Yeah, this is Bill Doty speaking. I'm sure I'll be able to do that with a little bit of help from all the city departments, the city architect. And what we wanted to do was get in front of you, just to present our initial concept, get some feedback from you, and start the process, the dialogue.
All right.
With these comments we received today, we'd like to be able to show you what we've got, what our thinking is currently, and then be able to have maybe a private work session to work out some of the bugs in the creative process that was referred to in some of the reports.
Come on over here, Kevin, I won't bite you.
So what we're proposing to do right now, in order to get the client into the project as quickly as possible, to start having the kids experience this new facility, is to construct it in two phases. Right now, they have the funds to build Phase One immediately, provided we can get the appropriate approvals, with the idea that once we get Phase One built, the funding for the second phase will occur very quickly afterwards. But rather than waiting a year or so to get the other money together, we wanted to get this done in Phase One. John, I'm speaking out of turn, just jump in and tell me. So the idea here was, although this is an unusual piece of property, it's a great location for us to be able to put this facility in. So with the cul-de-sac and the industrial park and the allow, us being allowed to build that, we're hoping to build this, this first phase of this building. What we, our intent is light the balance of the buildings in there, build this out of split-faced masonry and metal siding. That's, that's what our intent is. And I have some elevations to kinda show you the concept. So Phase One is shown in yellow, so that would be the building that we're talking about, this twenty-thousand square foot building, that would allow us to put in some practice facilities in there.
So be an indoor practice field, just not to the size as the Phase Two field would be. The Phase Two field would accommodate an international-sized soccer field, which is, you know, if you've watched World Cup recently, that field that you see there are same sizes as what we'd have inside the building.
But in this building, they would practice with footsault, which is a little heavier ball, so you can't kick it as far, can't kick it as high. Yes.
How big is Phase Two gonna be?
Phase Two's a hundred and...
Hundred and seven thousand.
Hundred and seven thousand square feet under roof.
Okay.
So our, our intent initially is to get this facility open with this, this plan. Can you, can you all see that? This plan provides this building, this is the future building, this would be the initial building that we would build with these two footsault courts within. This entrance building that's out here, indicated by this, would have restrooms and entrance and so on, and also provide for a future stairway to the second floor. Because the intent is, we're gonna have this indoor practice facility at a smaller scale now, then, within a very short time, we would build it out, move their offices in, put some classrooms in, and things like that on a second floor within the same footprint. That's the intent for this. What would happen is, this would be Phase One, and Phase Two would be the build-out of the second floor area, and then the indoor full-size Olympic field. So that's Phase Two.
Right. So in order, build Phase One, practice on that for as long as we need to, because, you know, the motivation for this is Ambassadors, well, northeast Ohio is really becoming cramped for soccer space, available soccer fields. Uh, it, it's something that really isn't, uh, it isn't available. And so Ambassadors is looking for immediate, you know, immediate-use space as quickly as possible. Uh, and by that, you know, if they had their druthers, they'd have space available November 1st. And that's super aggressive to try to get this done that quick, but that's what they're looking for.
Well, and the, to understand the soccer and the use of this facility, it's used mainly from October through May until kids can go outside and play outside. But the practice time is typically four to midnight.
Yeah, so, so really, think about this for your use of the facility. The facility is used off-hours from everything else being done in that industrial park. So the hours that they'd be practicing, the prime hours would be four through midnight on weeknights, and then from eight till midnight on a weekend. So that's basically how that would work.
And various soccer clubs and teams can rent, you know, the field at various times. So you're not gonna have a ton of people here initially for the, for this, this use of this building.
Until Phase Two.
Until Phase Two. And then when Phase Two happens, we would develop the rest of the parking for about four hundred cars. That's what we're gonna have.
Is this for a variety of age groups?
Yes.
It is. It would go, gosh, it goes from age seven, six, seven, all the way up through eighteen, twenty-year-olds.
So for the littler kids, this large field would be divided, probably thirds, even...
Right.
Thirds, halves, that kind of thing. For the littler kids running this way and not that way.
And this is for clubs, club soccer. I mean, this is what's done.
That was my next question, so it doesn't have to be a certain group, right? No, any, like...
Ambassadors is a, a club soccer foundation, so that's, there, in the northeast Ohio area, I believe there's maybe four clubs, or are there more than that, John?
Must be twenty or thirty.
Oh, okay. So there's more than that?
How many?
Twenty or thirty, this is a lot of clubs.
Of clubs. We're one of the clubs, and it's a well-developed, been around for seventeen years, and right now, there's about just shy of four hundred kids that are part of the club.
Okay.
How about something with, um, being a club, do you ever let schools come in and participate on it or anything like that, or just your club?
Well, the way this would be set up, initially with Phase One, there would probably only be room for Ambassadors to practice on the field initially. With Phase Two, Phase Two would be available to, to many different entities.
Right, but he said they could be rented.
It, it would be rented out on an hourly basis, that's basically, it's all about hours of field time. Um, it, it could be rented out from anything, from, you know, rec soccer all the way to different types of events that aren't even soccer-related. Um, this is based off of a model that's already there in Pontiac, Michigan. It's called the Ultimate Soccer Arena. They actually have two-hundred-seventy-five thousand square feet under roof. They have two of these buildings, and then a lacrosse field in between them. So it's a massive facility. So this is based, though, on that model, so with that in mind, you know, the Ultimate Soccer Arena has gymnastics events on a weekend sometimes, gymnastics tournaments. So they cover the field, they bring out, you know, gymnastics equipment, and that's what they do for that weekend. But it's mostly soccer-based, not to say that there can't be other things happening here, but it's mostly soccer-based. The field's actually ideally set up for lacrosse as well, which is an up-and-coming sport right now.
So, so from an architectural and planning requirement, this building would be under the thirty-five-foot height. The other building would be seventy feet at the peak. And these are some preliminary drawings that we have created, showing the various masonry and siding components. This is the main entrance element, and in this design, because what we're trying to do, this was the ultimate design that we did originally, and then we asked to be tabled, because we couldn't build this all at once, and we would've needed to. So now we went back to the drawing board to try and get John a facility where you can get these kids in here, where you can get some action and some money flowing to start on the second phase. So this little yellow box here would actually be this located in here, because this is the long elevation, which is what you'd see here. So this is not exactly this, but it's the same sort of flavor that we're gonna use. And if you go back, and there's some nice buildings in there, they use multicolored split-faced masonry and metal siding. So that's what we're going to do, is use a combination of the split-faced masonry and metal siding and the metal roof.
What doesn't always translate here is, is the scale of this thing. I mean, the green is this, is the actual site. It's seventeen acres, so it's a massive site. The building itself is, is really, the Phase Two is two acres under roof, a little better than two acres under roof. So, you know, that, that's, that's pretty large. You'd think that the yellow part is minuscule, but when, this is actually the existing building next door. You could go look at that right now, the building right next door, and Phase One actually dwarfs.
Well, it's a little bit. It's about twenty-five percent bigger.
Right.
But you can get a sense of the scale of this building if you see the building next door.
Right.
Now, seeing is an important word. In the planner's comments, he mentioned buffering. Now, that point is pointing north, the point?
The point over there is pointing north.
It's north.
This is east, west.
All right, just so everybody's aware, and there's houses to the west.
Correct, all the way down here.
Yeah. There, there are ways from that lot.
There are.
But we'd still like to, to make sure that always keep buffering in your mind, all right? Um, over the years, there's been a lot of things that have offered to come in there. Some of them are just outright objectionable, like one was a trucking facility, so you'd be having eighteen-wheelers coming in and out all hours of the day. So that didn't work at all. What times do you think, like you said, four hundred cars, and there's the guy that's right on the corner of that street? When would it be four hundred cars?
Well, the way the tournaments work, four hundred cars would be on a weekend tournament, like a, you know, a, a full-club level tournament, and it would be on a weekend. It would probably be a Saturday and a Sunday, and the nature of what happens here, you don't have four hundred cars coming in at one time and four hundred cars leaving at one time. It's trickling in constantly during the day, in and out all the time.
Because of the games and the ron-robin-ness of the games.
So in other words, you're talking over a period of time.
Correct. A game lasts an hour.
But because of the size and what you're doing, we have to have X number of parking places.
Correct, yes. I would, I would venture to say you're never gonna fill that parking lot. It, it's, it wouldn't happen. It doesn't happen.
Well, the one in Pontiac that's double the size doesn't have parking for this many.
And I've been there to Pontiac once myself, and I've seen, John's been there probably half a dozen times, and, you know, we've taken pictures at different times. During different times, during tournaments, during different things that have been going on, and they have way more parking, parking's required by code, they have way more than they ever use there. They never fill the parking lot.
All right, let's see if there's any other questions from the commissioners.
So Phase Two would be planning for, when you're planning for when to start that?
Hard to say exactly when that would be. I mean, Phase One is our, really, that's our big push right now. We've gotta, we've gotta get space. I mean, we need it just as soon as we can. It's conceivable that Phase Two could be two years down the road.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, back to your point, my only concern would be more of a safety issue down the road. And I, I welcome the project, but I think with the traffic between our plant, what's coming in and out of there, and then also the steel, uh, improvement or steel coil plant in the back there, which has several eighteen-wheelers coming in and out of there all day long, some point down the road, they're gonna have to have a traffic light on East Island Road. Specifically, people going out to the left, heading east on Highland Road, turning out in there at four o'clock in the afternoon or five o'clock, it's brutal, 'cause now with the bridge, people are coming down there at a pretty good clip, and it's very hard to see people in there, so I just wanted to go right there and say...
Your point is well-taken. That's why we need six lanes on eighty-two. Hopefully, we can move some people over to eighty-two.
Some.
Will they all go there? I don't know. I don't know. That traffic's pretty bad on Highland. It really, really gets busy at rush hour.
Right.
All right, but you're talking about times other than rush hour.
At rush hour, we're coming in. We're not leaving.
Okay.
We're coming in. You know, usually, like during the school year, and our prime time is from October through May. Actually, it's November 1st through May. But that is prime time for indoor soccer, so it's after-school. So, you know, your, your kids are really, starting around five, four o'clock would be your, your first available field.
And he's talking, too, about coming out of the facility itself and the danger, 'cause the trucks, some of those businesses are open 24 hours back into there. You know, and you got a lot of semi-traffic is what he's talking about. A light would be needed. Am I right, Mr. Hopkins? Right. I have a question. On phase two, 'cause we're looking at the aerial here, okay, what is the distance from the homes on South Bedford Road? What's the distance between the residential homes, the property line of the residential homes, and phase two?
This is the property line of the residential homes. This is a 50-foot setback. This is 150-foot setback from those resident, from the residential property lines.
From the property line.
Not from the homes.
The houses are several hundred feet.
Several hundred feet.
Yeah.
Closer to.
Yeah.
They're really deep.
Very deep.
And the sound barrier, too, is gonna be, okay, where they're not gonna really hear a lot of...
What we wanna do is, we wanna work with the city engineer, architect, and planner. We'd like to see maybe a combination of mounding and planting. Because simple planting doesn't always knock the sound down, or the headlights and things like that. So, we wanna work with you on a combination like that and see what would be acceptable. You know, we're, we're going to have quite a lot here.
We're gonna have quite a bit of excavation going on here, so we would have opportunity to build a mound, almost the full length of the property.
Well, anything you do to buffer is good, but you, again, this is zoned in such a way that something that could come in there, that's way, way more noise, more pollution, more everything.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's still open to anybody. This is nowhere near as bad as some of the things can get to be, especially with your hours being off-hours for the businesses. I don't see anything in the engineering about a light. You would think that they would put something in here, but that's point well-taken, because the light might help there anyway. Because right now, I think the people that are on that road have trouble getting in and out, and your people coming to you and leaving you would have trouble, too. So somewhere along this, this process, we might even have to have a traffic study.
He's recommending that.
Okay. All right, so you're on the same page.
Just put a light there. 'Cause we already know that's heavy traffic.
All right.
You got to study that.
You know, I mean, yeah, I don't think it'd...
Take a rocket science.
Give me the money, I'll be more than happy to do it.
You just have to help find the money.
Here's, here's the lady right here that, that gives me the money. So is this now light?
I don't, I don't have any.
Are you leaning into this will pass?
Well, it, it needs one down the road, yeah.
Well, the lights are very expensive today, and that's why there's a little bit of a turmoil here.
But engineering's gonna work with them, is correct?
Yeah, we got a lot of details to work out. What this is supposed to be tonight is if Planning Commission would think it would work. If Planning Commission thinks it would work, well, then we tell them, we think we can work with you and make this happen. If not, Planning Commission says forget.
Right. Because our next thing is to spend a lot of money doing engineering studies, because the engineer wants the thing completely designed. Not just an idea where the retention is, not just an idea where stormwater management is. He wants it designed before he's gonna sign off on this. We can't recommend to our client to buy this piece of property without knowing that he can use the property for he wants. So this was like trying to feel you out about, what do you think? Do we have a shot, or no?
I absolutely think it's pretty good.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
All right, so, so far, we're, we're doing well, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Do you have any plans for outdoor stuff for the remainder of the property?
Not at this time. You know, I mean, right now, we're basically maximizing the site for indoor, is, is what we're kinda passionate about.
Show us where the easements are.
So this is, this right here is a 150-foot setback. This is a 50-foot setback.
Power company?
This is the power line easement. We are right on it. This whole back is a power line easement. So we're trying to stay out of that, because that's always, either it costs you a lot of money, or they won't let you do it at all.
All right, so, out of tonight, what we've got so far is that this could very much happen, but you have to keep in mind that if a traffic light is needed there, you may be asked to put it there.
Okay.
All right, I mean...
We hear ya.
Okay, just keep that in mind, because we have extensive traffic problems there right now, and this would be added traffic. So that might be something that you would be responsible for. And traffic lights aren't 15, 20 bucks either, you're talking $100.
Put a couple in.
Yeah. All right, so, um...
What do we do?
Do we need a vote on that? What do you think, Dennis? Or just give a, I think we should vote. How about, why, how about a motion saying this idea is feasible?
Well, I could make a motion, and I think we continue with the discussions on this plan and project.
I, I was, well, yeah, okay, I mean, I was gonna make a motion for a conceptional approval with the BZA and engineering recommendations.
Good. Why didn't you make it?
Well, 'cause you guys were talking, so, that's what I was gonna...
All right, well, actually, that's a little more detail. Is that good with you?
Well, that's what Brian Francis, Brian Francis is the one who says it in his notes.
Do we have a second?
Brian Francis says, okay.
Okay, you'll second it. So Rita made it, Bob's seconded it. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none. Thank you. All in favor?
And they have to go to BZA and then...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote? No, okay.
Okay, so, what you've got now is conceptual approval, but you have to go through the steps.
Yes.
Variances are needed, you need to work with engineering, you need to work with our building department, all right? But this sounds pretty exciting. It sounds like it might work very well, and be just an additional benefit to people who are living here, that we have this kind of facility.
We agree.
Yeah, you do.
We appreciate it.
Sure. Thanks for bringing it in. I think we're done for tonight, and we will be seeing you again in the future.
Will we be able to set up informal work sessions to be able to get through some of that?
Well, you know what you can do is you can work through our building department and absolutely meet with the, the engineers, meet with Mike, you know? So we get all this input, so that when we do this, we do it once, and you don't have to keep coming back.
I agree.
We love her.
We like her.
All right, thank you, fellas. Great.
Did you sign this one? He doesn't sign that one. No, that one.
Thank you.
We'll do some signing, and we'll move right on. Be just a moment.
I'd sooner.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Good luck.
Thanks.
I don't, I might, I have a pencil, I don't have a pen. Sorry.
All right, I only charge by the minute, not the hour.
Full signage change?
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is a proposed signage change for mattress firm at the corner of Rob Eaton and Aurora Road. Is that, am I reading that right?
We had, we're on the Momentum Christian Church.
Oh, that was a minute, I'm sorry. My paperwork got messed up. Okay, now, proposed signage change for Momentum Christian Church. Now we got it. Somebody here? Hi, come on down. Dan Smith, or either one of you, Dan Smith? I don't think you are.
I'm not.
Okay, that's you?
Yes, that's me. And I want to come over to my side.
Okay, yeah.
I use your church all the time, by the way.
Turn around.
Huh?
Did you turn around?
No, wait. Aren't you, aren't you on the border of Twinsburg there?
Yep, yep.
Right across from the rock center?
Yep.
I, I go to AA over there.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, we use your church a lot, so...
Yeah, there's three of our groups, I mean, every week, so it's cool.
Right. I know.
All right, we have some comments from our plan.
The applicant is requesting to replace an existing ground monument sign located at 1717 East Aurora Road. The proposed sign area is now showing 3x6, 18 square feet total, and 6.5 feet tall. Included in the total sign area is an electronic message center, dynamic display. The property is located in the R1 Resident District. I've reviewed a sign illustration in connection with this request and offer the following comments for the Planning Commission consideration. Section 117903F of the Planning, or the Macedonia Planning and Zoning Code permits a freestanding sign in a residential zoning district with a maximum of 20 square feet of sign area. Additionally, section 117909 regulates dynamic displays, and specifically, 117909B1 states that dynamic displays are not permitted in residentially-zoned districts of the city. It is my understanding that the applicant received a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to permit the sign in a residential district. Please note, the sign is now revised to 6.5 feet tall, and the provided setback is 6.5 feet, which complies with the code. Regarding the performance requirements for electronic message centers as outlined in section 117909 of the Planning and Zoning Code, um, as long as the applicant follows the performance requirements laid out in the code, they should be all right.
There's no sense of reading all of that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was kinda confused on this one.
The conclusion? Okay. In conclusion, the applicant is required to submit the technical standards for the sign to ensure compliance with the items noted in the review. If the commission finds it acceptable, the application can be approved, subject to a final administrative review to ensure compliance with the technical codes' standards.
All right, we have a sign code, so basically, what he's saying is you gotta be in compliance with that. Dennis, do you have any comments on this?
No, we've worked with them on the, on it quite a bit, so...
Quite a bit? So there's been good?
Yes.
All right. Did we have any comments from Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the intended location of the sign to be the same as the existing? If installed in the same location, engineering has no issues with the proposed sign. If the intent is to locate the sign closer to the edge of the road, engineering will need to provide further review for site distance conflicts.
That would be intended for the same place.
Okay, so you're good with that. There'll be some changes in the road right there, so if they wanna make sure.
Don, I had a question on this one, 'cause like, like, what was the big deal, like, even like the rec center across the street? We looked at some signs that we would like to even eventually put in across the street at the rec center, and then also over here at the golf location. We've approved all those, and they're kinda like in an area that really nobody's gonna, even though it is, it says R1, but it, they're like in between, it's, they're between a rock and a hard space right here. And I don't understand it, because none of the homes are gonna be affected that are in behind them for this sign.
And that's very true.
So I don't understand what the big deal was.
Go over that again about the BZA approval for the, our, have they gotten it, or not yet?
Yes, they have. They've been to the BZA, and it's been approved.
So it's a non-issue.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so...
I mean, well, with that they had to go to BZA and all that stuff, when they came the last time.
Yeah, that's the law.
I was like, well, yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying, it just, it just didn't seem...
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
It, it doesn't make sense to me. I was confused on that, that's all.
That's the law. Sometimes it doesn't make any sense. All right, so, any questions, comments from the commissioners?
I make a motion, oh, you've done, you want to give it?
No, no.
I was just gonna make a motion to approve their sign.
Do I have a second?
Do you want to add the condition that they follow the requirements?
Well, yeah. You read them all in, right? And he's working, he said he's working with you guys, right?
Yeah, but you need to add that to your motion, though.
Oh, okay. I make a motion that we approve your sign, and that you work with the building department, Mr. Saxon, and the building department here.
Contingent on working with them?
Contingent on them following the technical requirements of the dynamic display part of the code.
There you go. So we'll say it that way, contingent on following the requirements, okay? And maybe that way it's got...
Right.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? I didn't hear anybody. Good luck.
You got it, all right.
And now I know which one Dan is.
Yep.
All right. All right, next, we have a proposed cell tower alteration at Valley View Road 9683. On this particular one, there's not gonna be anybody here tonight from them, but let's talk about it a little bit. Usually, if that's the case, we table, but in order for them to do all of the stuff that they're gonna do, they have to comply with FCC regulations, and, and there's so many different things that I don't even know why we haven't be forced to, to approve it, because they can't do anything because of the federal government unless it's right. So do you wanna move forward on this, and just make a motion and go forward? Do you have any comments at all, or anything?
I have engineering comments.
Yeah, we have engineering comments.
If the applicant receives Planning Commission approval, engineering will perform a detailed structural review of the proposed alterations prior to issuance of a permit.
Which, again, they can't really do anything unless it meets FCC, so...
Especially if, you know, the engineer figures out towers there, I think.
Right.
Looks like they're taking down one set and putting up another, so...
It's not even something that, I'm okay with a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, moving on, proposed ground sign at 9862 Freeway Drive. Come on down. Are you Randy?
No, I am his boss.
Okay.
My car.
You're the, you're the big chief.
He had to, he had a, the same kind of meeting going on in Oroville today, so couldn't make it back.
Oh, no, I would rather come here than Oroville.
That's what I said.
Yeah. Okay, comments?
The applicant is requesting to construct a 4x5, 20-square-foot ground monument sign in front of their property located at 9862 South Freeway Drive. The property is substantially zoned B1 Convenience Business District. The parking lot appears to be residentially-zoned. I've reviewed the sign for compliance with section 117907B of the Macedonia Planning and Zoning Code, which permits a 40-square-foot ground monument sign. The setback for a ground monument sign is restricted to a height of the sign or five feet, whichever is greater. I've reviewed an application and site plan, sign illustrations dated July 7, 2014, in
I've reviewed an application and site plan, sign illustrations dated July seventh, two thousand fourteen, in connection with this request and offer the planning commission the following information for their consideration. The proposed sign is six feet tall and the proposed setback is twenty feet. The proposed sign area is twenty square feet and forty is permitted. Given this, the proposal complies with the code. My only request is that the applicant adds some degree of landscaping around the base of the sign. Something as simple as low-lined bushes and flowers would be appropriate.
Okay.
Where's your boss?
Not a problem.
Can I see your sign real quick and check it out?
Sign real quick. Um, the applicant, or my customer, wants to do the landscaping and he wants to do a stone, sackstone base on the bottom.
Yeah.
And incorporate both to make it happen.
Good.
Right.
The only issue there is, and we just found this out, is I guess they're, might be widening the road now?
That's correct.
We have engineering comments.
Yeah. And my client would like to still put the sign in, but it's movable. So, he would like to do this, and when they widen the road, he wants to move it back to the next, he doesn't wanna wait.
Really, it's gonna be pretty quick.
What's that?
The construction's gonna be pretty quick.
Well, he said they won't get it moved until December, is what we were told.
Okay, in my mind, that's pretty.
Wow, for a business, that's a poor thing.
Yeah, you're talking a couple, before you know it, it's gonna be December.
Well, how is it movable?
It, it, it's not concreted in.
Okay.
Their final poles, we come in, we can pick them up.
So, you're alright with that?
Yeah, we're, and he, that's what, this is what the client wants. I, my recommendation was, hey, let's just wait, but he, you know, he's worried that he, he needs a sign.
Sure, sure.
It's his advantage, so.
Yeah, that's.
He has to look to see if he can put it in the right future spot.
Well, I think the right future spot would be too far away if the road isn't moved back.
Yeah, in other words, it, but then the road will be there, so there'll be cars closer to it, so.
But, you know, you know, so I guess it's a gamble, and he just, he didn't wanna wait. When we brought this up to him, he said he'd like to do it now.
Well, that's pretty amazing that he would put the sign up and then move it.
Move it. I mean, I think it's cost to move it, to probably tear down the, because the blocks are dry stacked, so they're not concreted in. You're not putting a foundation in for the sign, this is just a whole, you know, a final post and a whole like fence. I think it's just, I mean, I think it's a two-hour move for somebody to come out there.
Well, I'm just amazed that he went to.
Except for the shrubs and landscaping that they're making and require, which I think is funny, because right there in front is Speedway with the mugly cones. I won't say what I really think, but, you know, I mean, yeah, let's not, let's not get me going.
So.
But, you know what I'm saying, I think, you know, landscaping around those, I think your brick is beautiful.
Yeah. Um, if you look here on the plan, if they do move back for the proposed, and they go back another, it actually puts it back into this, you know, a little bit far, and I guess unless they're doing it for sure, why?
Oh, yeah, they're doing it, but it's, it's gonna be, well, if you listen to ODOT, alright, it's gonna be tomorrow.
Right.
But, in all reality, we're still going through purchasing.
Show, Mr. Hopkins and I think he's, look at, no, show him the brick that you're planning.
I think I seen that.
Yeah, I mean, look at that brick, you know, I mean, I think that's nice, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't ask for shrubs at the other one, I don't know why you drew it in on this one.
I don't think that's putting some shrubbery or some.
I would hold up on the shrubbery to the roads, to the roads moved.
That might be, you might move slow on that, but maybe we can do the, the brick would be easy, so.
We're, we're fine with the brick.
Okay.
Alright, uh, any other questions?
Just a concern about this. Putting it in, um, and typically if, I assume we're getting right away from the side of the road. That would be, relocating the sign would probably be some, like a compensable type item where they might get compensated for after relocating the sign.
Oh, I know what you're saying.
I'm still saying we should, we should put, yeah, if we're gonna prove it, they're agreeing to move it.
Without.
Yeah, and we're not paying for it, yeah.
Which I think is not a big deal.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Because if this thing goes in.
Yeah, you shouldn't use state money for that, as we've been told.
Yeah, that could hold up the appraisal and purchase, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess is there anything?
That's a good idea.
Or it's probably great for them if they say, you know, I, I don't wanna move it. You know, next spring. You know, is there?
That'd be on a legal end.
Well, if, if you would put right in the motion. If you would put it right in the motion that it's to be moved after roadway acquisition at their cost. And then we're done.
Okay, so, make, make motion to approve the sign. Estimative, um, sign must be moved, um, at the appropriate time with the roadway widening work, uh, with no compensation for the relocation of the sign.
Good. Second. We have a second. And a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, nice meeting.
Thank you.
Alright, take care.
See you guys.
Alright, uh.
We got a proposed reverse.
Page two of the minutes or agenda, I don't have it here, but, oh, it isn't. Page two of the agenda. Is that, is.
Here's.
Turn now or surface.
Um, right here on these, but I don't see.
There's the.
Cause one was gonna be tabled. What?
Reverse gable at ninety-eight sixty-two Freeway.
Alright. I don't know why mine doesn't have that.
So, this is tabled. Alright, and then, so we're on that.
Alright, proposed use in B four district, uh, two, two, three, East Highland Road, due on the date.
Do we have any comments at all?
We have anybody here from this? Which one's being tabled, you know?
Two twenty-three East Highland, that's tabled.
Oh, that's tabled. We got the wrong one. So, this is, uh, reverse, proposed reverse gable.
Yeah.
To whole signage, is that you? There you go, we almost went right over you there.
I wouldn't like to.
Okay, sorry about that. Alright, we have some comments?
There you go. Oh, where is this? We just, I was looking for, I was looking for comments. No, but I mean, we don't have comments, a memo from our.
Yeah, the original building design left little or no signage space for the center unit of the building. The proposed gable is an acceptable solution without signage space for the center unit of the building. Complete structural framing planes details and exterior elevations prepared by a design professional will, will be required for building for their purposes.
That kinda shows.
My gosh, it's a word.
So, the drawing that, uh, I had, copy, those are original plans. Basically, I drew in the, uh, reverse gable in the middle. When the building was constructed or designed, um, was not a very good design. Uh, because it left no place to put a sign over the middle doors. For the middle unit. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Dennis, I think that code or ordinance reads you cannot put a sign above the roof line.
You couldn't have a roof-mounted sign sticking up above the roof, so this was the only alternative you had.
So, we had to create something in order to put a sign there. As of right now, my understanding is sign ram is moving from across the street um, into this space, that's why you see a sign or have a sign on there. I didn't realize I was supposed to apply for the sign or ram a sign at the same time. I don't, does that have to be done since the sign is already existing across the street?
Yeah, it still has to be done, but it doesn't have to be right at this time. I mean, you can go ahead and construct the gable and then do that.
Okay.
Did, here, can you pass it down, Mr. Hopkins?
Are there any other comments? No. Alright, any questions? What we're looking at now is putting a gable up.
Yep. It's set up on top of an existing roof, it'll be fake, basically.
Yeah.
And all the materials will match.
Yep. Yep. Which is EFS.
Alright.
You're careful of.
Yeah, I, I, pretty tough part of the problem, you know?
Yeah.
You good?
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve?
I'll second it.
The proposed reverse gab, sign, gab, gab, rolls, signage at ninety-eight sixty-two Freeway Drive.
And Bob seconded it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
That, there you go, sorry you had to wait so long. Alright, do we have any other business tonight?
I, I do, but I, you would have to leave, because I have to talk to these gentlemen, because you have to recuse yourself.
I, I have to recuse myself. I'm very happy to recuse myself.
I do, I, do you have a minute?
Sure.
Alright, well, uh, can I adjourn this meeting?
Sure.
We still have a minute.
No, you can adjourn it.
We still have a minute to approve mayor.
Oh, oh, yeah, we're gonna approve the minutes.
Yeah, we were waiting for you, thank you, Janelle, you're so invaluable. Alright, uh, we have minutes, uh, approval of the April twenty-first, two thousand fourteen minutes of the planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, well, now you have to abstain from, right?
Yes. Um, the motion approved?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, uh, next is approval of the May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen minutes.